Good morning, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. If everyone please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, with the government of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. No one? Okay, thank you. Proclamation presentation 220167. Proclamation declaring June 15th, 2022 is Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lackawanna County. Here to speak on that is our Area Agency on Aging Director, Jason Kavulich. Jason?
Good morning, everyone. You know, we're here most often talking about programming and services that we offer in Lackawanna County. One thing that we don't often talk about that is extremely important and some of the most important things that we do isn't the investigation of older adult abuse and exploitation. Just last year alone, this county received 1,052 calls about older adult abuse and exploitation. 1,001 of those calls were investigated, 520 of those calls were substantiated, 302 out of those calls were based on caregiver neglect, abuse, or exploitation. It's a serious problem, it's serious work, and it's something that we have to continue to bring to light in the public's eyes. One in 10 people over the age of 60 are going to be exploited. One in 24 people is all that reports that exploitation. So today, we're here, I'm here with my staff and the individuals who do the work every day. People see me as, you know, the representative for the Area Agency on Aging, but the folks that are here actually do the work. They're the ones that take the 1,052 calls, they're the ones that do the 1,001 investigations, and to them goes all the credit for the work that they do protecting the older adults in this community and keeping them safe. So I'd like to acknowledge the staff at the Area Agency on Aging, and in particular, Kary Anzalovich, Mia Angerson, Sarah McDonald, for being the administrators that make sure that the work is done every day while we're here talking about programming, while we're here talking about contracts. So this is more for them than, and the older adults that they serve than for all of us who sit at the top.
They all do a great job.
Thank you, Jason.
Great job.
You've done a great job.
Do you want me to read this proclamation?
Please.
Okay. Whereas the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging, in conjunction with the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and the World Health Organization at the United Nations, celebrates today, June 15th, 2022, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in an effort to unite communities in Lackawanna County and northeastern Pennsylvania in raising awareness about elder abuse. And whereas elder abuse is widespread, every year, an estimated one in 10 older Americans are victims of elder abuse, neglect, or exploitation. This call to action raises awareness about abuse, neglect, and exploitation of elders. When we come together, we can put support services in place and direct community resources toward addressing and preventing elder abuse. And whereas prevention can be achieved if we build our relationships with the elder community, participate in the work, play and life of our elder neighborhoods, and reduce social isolation by improving the role of transportation. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notary, Annie, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim June 15th, 2022, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lackawanna County. Thank you. I have your proclamation. If you guys can do a picture of Mike. Right? You want to do a picture now? Brian?
What's that? I'm sure. Yes, I'm sorry, I was doing something else. Put it up top, please.
Come on up?
How are you? Good morning.
No, let them go. Let them go. Awesome. Thank you. That's for you later, Jason. He's not looking.
Yes, approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 342357-343011, inclusive totaling $1,877,126.85. Lackawanna County's general electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $4,807,591.7. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220165.
Designating and proclaiming Juneteenth as a holiday, whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free and that the Emancipation Proclamation would be enforced. And whereas African-Americans who had been slaves in the southwest celebrated June 19th, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations, and is considered the longest-running African-American holiday. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania officially recognized June 19th as a state holiday on June 19th, 2021. And whereas President Joseph Biden signed legislation proclaiming June 19th as a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021. And whereas 47 states and the District of Columbia have recognized Juneteenth as a holiday or a day of observance, and now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby resolve as follows. June 19th is hereby recognized as a holiday in Lackawanna County to be designated as Juneteenth Independence Day. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. We are strictly observing a federal holiday, which is absolutely necessary, and it's the right thing to do. Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just note that we will be closed on Monday, June 20th.
June 20th.
Lackawanna County will be closed.
June 19th is a Sunday, so...
June 19th is a Sunday, June 20th will be observed as Juneteenth this year. The county will be closed for that day.
Okay.
Resolution 220150.
Entering into co-promotional agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into a co-promotion agreement with Odyssey, Pennsylvania, LLC, and Scranton tomorrow for the Scrantastic Spectacular on Courthouse Square, July 3rd, 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
If you don't mind, I just have two things to open. One, I'm so happy there's a Juneteenth proclamation, and for those who don't know, we have a wonderful organization, Black Scranton, in our community. We've been able to fund them, but they're hosting a June 19th block party on Sunday starting at 12:00 PM at the Black Cultural Center in North Scranton. So you can look on our Facebook page if you want more information on that. Also, I just need to recognize Judy Ushak. Unfortunately, we lost Judy this past weekend, but I just need to recognize what an amazing artist and arts leader she was. I think it's important, she was one of the first artists I met when I moved back about 20 years ago. She started First Friday, which, as most of you know, has turned into an amazing event. She was a co-founder of Heart to Art with Donna Doherty, so most of the murals that you see in our Government Center, Judy had a part in. She was also involved in the North Pocono Fair and Cultural Society, so Judy did a lot, and we send our condolences to her family and friends, but it's really nice that she'll live on with us and her legacy and her beautiful artwork, so.
Thank you, Maureen.
But getting back to the business, we are luckily and happily bringing back the Scrantastic, Lackawanna County Presents Scrantastic Spectacular on July 3rd. So there's some paperwork to do with that, and we work with Odyssey and Scranton tomorrow on this. So this is just an agreement with them about co-promoting the event.
Anyone have any questions for Maureen? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Maureen. Resolution 220151.
Entering into an agreement with Community Development Properties, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into an agreement with Community Development Properties Scranton to allow international fireworks to use the rooftop of the Casey Parking Garage located at 523 Lackawanna Avenue on July 3rd, 2022. This agreement is among Community Development Properties, National Development Council, Scranton Parking Authority, ABM Parking Services, Scranton Tomorrow, International Fireworks, the City of Scranton, and Lackawanna County. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director McGuigan.
This is just another agreement allowing us to use the Casey Garage. That's where the fireworks will be going off from. We'll have the whole vendor and Philharmonic concert on the square, but this allows us use of the parking garage.
It's a really nice event, Maureen, you do a great job with it. Thank you. All right, anyone have any questions for Maureen?
Rain date?
Oh, good call. Yes, unfortunately, I can't solve the weather problem. I can solve most other things, but it'll be Saturday, July 9th, at 9:30. We'll just be doing fireworks.
Yeah, we won't think about that.
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, resolution 220152.
Granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby grant the cultural partnership funding request of the Scranton Tomorrow Organization for the July 3rd fireworks display to support the fireworks, insurance, and related expenses for the amount of $12,000. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director McGuigan.
You can tell this is a big event with a lot of partners, which we're really grateful for. So Scranton Tomorrow is our partner that handles all of the firework portion. So this funding is our part of funding the actual fireworks, but also to help them with the increased insurance costs they have to bear.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Maureen? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Resolution 220153.
Accepting Pennsylvania Department of State grant funds, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby accept Pennsylvania Department of State grant funds pursuant to the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020 to improve the administration of elections for federal office, including to enhance election technology and make election security improvements as authorized, in the amount of $18,148.18 from the 2022 Election Security Grant. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of the Election Bureau, Ms. Beth Hopkins.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners. The Pennsylvania Department of State is allocating $18,148.18 to Lackawanna County from the Election Security Grant to offset the cost for the upgrade of the computer equipment for the voter registration staff that meets the required specifications to access the new Pennsylvania voter registration system, the SureVote system. The new system's going to be implemented later this year, and I'll be working directly with the Department of State and our county IT department when procuring the necessary equipment. And to move forward with this, the board will need to approve and sign the notice of intent.
Thank you, Beth. And just want to say what a great job you did in this past election also.
Thank you.
As usual.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 220154.
Approving the addendum to the collective bargaining agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the addendum to the collective bargaining agreement between Lackawanna County and the SEIU Memorandum of Agreement with the Area Agency on Aging for its clerical case managers, registered nurses, and fiscal departments retroactive to January 1st, 2021. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Human Resources Director, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Thank you, Commissioners. This will be just the aging addendum piece to the SEIU contract. We wanted to get this done first so that we abide by the state fiscal year, which ends 6/30/2022, as these are all funded through state funds, and the raises are at no cost to the taxpayers.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you and congratulations, Joanne, for accepting the job as the Human Resource Director.
Thank you, sir.
It's wonderful.
Thanks.
You're doing a great job, and I just want to thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Joanne? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220155.
Entering into an MATP grant agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Public Welfare for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. The agreement shall commence July 1st, 2022, and terminate on June 30th, 2023. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Coordinator of Shared Transportation, Mr. Wayne Williams.
Good morning, everybody. This is just the annual agreement between DHS and Lackawanna County to provide service to medical assistance clients here in the county. This is just an annual agreement that we do every year.
Okay. You're able to help a lot of people, Wayne, and you do a great job.
We try.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Wayne?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you too. Resolution 220156.
Approving an amendment with VigilNet, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the amendment with VigilNet for the Adult Probation Department to commence May 25th, 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is your Solicitor, Mr. Frank Rizorio.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. This is a modification to an already existing agreement. Essentially, what's being modified here is the removal of a contingency percentage that was paid back to the county as a result of the county doing some collection work related to this particular contract. That work on behalf of the county has ceased, and the county will not be undertaking that any further. Therefore, the contract had to be modified to remove that provision. Otherwise, all other terms of the contract remain the same, and there's two years remaining set to expire May of 2024. If there's any questions?
No questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220157.
Approving an online payment system, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby accept and enter into an agreement for the e-payments now, online system for the Treasurer's Office's Games of Chance and other licenses. It's a one-time payment of $7,800 and a yearly maintenance fee of $1,500. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak about that is the Director of IT, Mr. Mike Brown.
Michael. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This opportunity comes up as we're deregulating the IT systems, and we're trying to remove all of the unnecessary costs. So as we're shutting down the 400, this system allows the Treasurer's Department to continue doing the work that they do. This was an old application that was not really maintained, that's on the old 400. This way, this allows them more opportunities and easier use.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mike?
I don't think so.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Resolution 220158.
Approving a Comcast Business Service Order Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Comcast Business Service Order Agreement for the Coroner's Office for 24 months of Internet 200 and security solution. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Mr. Director Brown.
Again, Commissioners, this contract allows the Coroner's Office to function a little more secure. We were hoping that the PPNL improvement, agreement would actually go through for us to allow our fiber to go across from the prison over to the Coroner's Office, but as we're still fighting that, the coroner needs assistance. So this contract allows them to do this while we're still working with PPNL.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Resolution 220159.
Approving the providers for the Office of Drug and Alcohol, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the list of inpatient and outpatient treatment and prevention provider agreements for the Department of Human Services Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, as attached here, too. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Drug and Alcohol, Ms. Barbara Dirk.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to ask your support of our fiscal year 2022, 2023, drug and alcohol provider contracts. These are our standard contract agreements that we have, that we've had for a number of years. These include inpatient drug and alcohol providers, outpatient drug and alcohol providers, providers that do medication-assisted treatment, our prevention, excuse me, providers to assist with the work in the schools. Pretty typical, nothing has changed here. We've added a couple additional providers just so that we can ensure that the residents of both Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties have ample access to services. These would be in effect for the fiscal year starting July 1, and then will go to June 30 of 2023. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Anyone have any questions for Barb?
No, I don't.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Resolution 220160.
Approving an MOU with Keystone Health Information Exchange, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Area Agency on Aging Memorandum of Understanding with the Keystone Health Information Exchange with a three-year term to commence immediately. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Area of Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Good morning. This agreement will allow us to share real-time data on some of the cases that we just described earlier. So for cases that are involved with the Area Agency on Aging, if an individual enters the hospital system, we'll be notified almost instantaneously that a person's entered and for why, so that we can react, we can make sure that we're helping the older adult as quickly as possible. We're fortunate that area agencies on aging are allowed to be involved in this kind of healthcare system, and this will also help with the Department of Health moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220161.
Entering into an MOU with the United Neighborhood Centers, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Area Agency on Aging Memorandum of Understanding with the United Neighborhood Centers to assist in funding a development project, the Buck Town Center, located in the borough of Dummer, to feature affordable housing units for older adults 62 years and above, along with commercial space. The proposed development will offer housing units for underserved, low-to-moderate-income older adults in Lackawanna County. Lackawanna County and the Area Agency on Aging pledge a commitment of funds to support the Buck Town Center in the amount of $100,000. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Kavulich.
It's no secret that affordable housing for seniors in Lackawanna County is an issue. This project will provide exactly that, moderate to low-income, affordable housing for our older adults. We had the funds this year available at the end of the fiscal year to allocate in support of additional funding leverage for United Neighborhood Centers. So we'd like to pledge this money to be able to match other funds that'll be used to build the Buck Town Center.
Okay. Okay, great job, Jason. Anyone have any other questions for Jason? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220162.
Entering into an MOU with the United Way, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Area Agency on Aging Memorandum of Understanding with the United Way of Lackawanna and Wayne Counties to provide funding to offset the cost of development, training, and implementation of the Navigators Program, to provide much-needed transportation for those isolated individual ages 60 to 64 through 64, and information activities to older adults experiencing isolation in Lackawanna County, with the commitment of funds to support the Navigators Program in the amount of $75,000. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Kavulich.
Good morning. Senior isolation is another major issue that we've been trying to tackle within the county through a partnership with the United Way and multiple agencies in our community. The Moses Taylor Foundation has generously funded the majority of this program. However, the supplemental funding that we're providing will assist with the Navigators, which are individuals that will go into the homes of isolated seniors and help connect them to either services through the Area Agency on Aging or those that are appropriate for them, and also for transportation for individuals between 60 and 64 that can't take advantage of our shared ride program because they don't qualify. So there is a fee for those individuals. This will help us cover the cost of making sure that they can be transported to the services that they need.
The fee is not expensive at all, though.
The fee is reasonable. There's just no real money in any system allocated for these individuals, so we're just using this to cover the gap.
All right, thanks. Anyone have any questions for Jason?
Uh-uh.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And resolution 220163.
Yes, this is approving the Area Agency on Aging's professional service agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Area Agency on Aging's professional service agreements with the Pennsylvania Association of Area Agencies on Aging, the Center for Health and Human Services Research and Action, Comprehensive Care Connections, INCC3, and the Lackawanna College Business Partner Scholarship Tuition Program, as attached. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Finally, once again, here is Mr. Kavulich.
The first agreement is with P4A, which is the Association of Area Agencies on Aging. P4A will act as the business agent and the training facilitator for Lackawanna County, Pike County, and Wayne County in the rollout of the Ida system, which is a capacity evaluation tool that is based in research, it's evidence-based, and it's from Wild Cornell. So we'll be implementing this training program throughout the three counties as we work to build our senior adult advocacy center at Telespond. The second part of the agreement is with CHURSA, our Center for Human Services Research and Action. CHURSA will act as the business agent for us to do the capital project with Telespond to construct the advocacy center. They'll hold the match money that we are going to allocate for the two grants that They'll hold the match money that we are going to allocate for the two grants that we've applied for and have been green-lighted for, to actually build out the advocacy center for, for seniors in our community.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Jason?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jason.
C3 is the agreement with C3 organizations. C3 allows healthcare entities to contract with, directly with the Area Agency on Aging to do specific services within the community. We can't do that as a county entity, so we do that through C3 and our membership with C3, so that if, if Guy Singer or Lehigh Valley chooses to use our services to connect with older adults, they can, they can purchase that service from us.
Okay.
And our last agreement was the Tuition Assistance Program with Lackawanna College. As, as we know, workforce development is a major issue in Lackawanna County for direct care workers. This will allow us to recruit direct care workers to do personal care for, for older adults, which we, we have a waiting list for right now because we don't have enough workers. Those individuals that go to Lackawanna College that want to do this work will be part of a tuition deferment program. Their tuition will be deferred to the end of a semester. The Area Agency on Aging will pay a portion of their tuition. Lackawanna College will pick up the remainder of their tuition. So they could technically go to school for free while working at Telespan, serving seniors. It's a new program. It's a pilot program, and we're hoping that it's successful so we can clear up our waiting list and get more services into the seniors' homes, who we can't serve right now.
Anything else, Jason?
I think that's enough.
All right. Um.
I think they already voted on it.
We already voted on it.
They already voted on it. He took a breath, and they went right to a vote. Okay, so, so he finished up at the end of it. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Resolution 220-168.
Approving detention center agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center agreements for the fiscal years 22 through 23 with Bucks County, North Hampton County, and Chester County. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Administrative Officer for the Department of Human Services, Ms. Kathy Snyder.
Good morning. Thank you. There are three detention contracts on the agenda for fiscal year 2223, and that runs July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. These are annual renewal contracts for juvenile secure detention services, Bucks County, Chester County, and the North Hampton County contract is actually for eight bed hole days as well as regular detention services.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope. Just real quick, Kathy, how are we doing on, on bed space? Is it still very, very tough to find beds?
It's, it's still an issue. We were fortunate to lock in on these contracts for this fiscal year. We are working with North Hampton County and hoping that we can obtain more bed space at some point during the fiscal year, once they're able to hire additional staff.
And for the Commissioners' sake, it's not a lack of beds, it's a lack of staff in these detention centers, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220-169.
Approving provider agreements for OIFs. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve provider agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for fiscal year 22 through 23 with Adelphi Village, Chor Youth and Family Services, Community Specialist Corporation, the Academy, Institute for Human Resources, Summit School, INC., and the Summit Academy. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 15th, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Ms. Snyder.
These five OIFs provider contracts are again for fiscal year 2223. They're regular annual renewal contracts for Office of Youth and Family Services and juvenile probation, services for children in foster care, residential, shelter, drug and alcohol services for children in OIFs custody and JPL delinquent children.
Anyone have any questions for Kathy?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220-170.
Approving professional service agreements for OIFs. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the professional service agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for fiscal years